Twenty nineteen at eight, eight AM. We have our invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilman Fieldwood.
Good morning, please, uh, bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us here today in service of the city of Statesboro. Be with us as we make decisions that affect our city not only in the coming weeks, but in the coming years as well. And make sure that our decisions benefit the widest number of people and the largest number of people in our community. In your name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is ours, one nation, united in the middle of the diversity and justice of all.
All right, we'll move down to agenda item three on the, um, of the overall is consideration of a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash oh seven, a resolution approving of award of contract to Parker Engineering for professional engineering services for the twenty nineteen community development block grant subject to award of grant funding would be provided by grant funds. Justice.
As you may recall, at the January fifteenth, twenty nineteen, city council meeting, you all recruited the application for community development block grant for our community affairs. So following that grant approval, we solicited requests for qualifications for professional engineering services in accordance with the guidelines and regulations set forth by PCA. So following the receipt of the results of mills on February twentieth, city evaluation committee reviewed and evaluated proposals received and has selected Parker Engineering for recommendation of the work. Parker Engineering has successfully performed engineering services for city projects in Statesboro, including the Gordon Street area, and is currently working on the twenty sixteen city project in De Bryant, Levitt, Henshaw area. Any questions, Janine?
Counsel, is there any question? Okay, is there a motion to approve? All those in favor? Let it show that the agenda item three is passed. We'll move down to agenda item four, which is consideration of a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash oh eight, a resolution approving of award contract to associates and local government assistants and corporate for grant administration services for FY for fiscal year twenty nineteen, community development block grant subject to award of grant funding would be provided by grant funds. Jason.
So concurrently with soliciting proposal, request for proposals for engineering services for this grant, staff also solicited proposals, request for proposals for grant administrative services. So as we evaluated the engineering proposals, we also evaluated the grant proposals, we only received two grant administration proposals, and staff recommends ALGA, associates and local government assistants. They also, like Parker Engineering, assisted us on the twenty sixteen grant, currently assisted us on the twenty sixteen grant and the Gordon Street grant, so we have good success working with this.
And Jason, both of those groups, um, do work basically upfront with the hopes that we get the awards, so they're actually doing free work and they only get paid once we get the grant.
That's right. It's consistent with these types of grants that there'll be preliminary grant administrative services and engineering services at no cost to the city unless the grants are awarded. They're aware of that.
You have a question for counsel? Seeing that it is done, is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
All those in favor? Let agenda item four show that it's passed. Agenda item five is discussion of contracts in the city of Statesboro and business financial consultant firm, better known as a lobbyist organization. Not going to take the lead on that as I added that to the, for the conversation for today. It's my belief that in this day and time, um, that the best organizations have those connections, uh, on capital without state capital, on the capital here. What I've seen during my research with this is that key cities that we're beginning to compete with, they have lobbyist organizations. And at the end of the day, what it boils down to is either we're going to take opportunity to go after the resources, which is AKA the funding for the projects that we need, or are we going to just allow other entities to go out? Are there any questions, comments, thoughts, anything along those lines?
Mayor, are there precedent guidelines on what would be put out for our community that are similar to ours at the GMA or some sort of guideline or outline?
I know that Darren had reached out, Darren, if you, if you want to come up and talk about what you found, uh, I know that Darren reached out and got some information in regards to that. But typically what I, what I would like to see along these lines is I would like to see the staff kind of determine the areas that we would, that we see the opportunity and then I'd like for counsel to take a look and say, yeah, we like those areas, but let's add this particular area or what have you. But Darren, you'll talk about what you found, uh, during, during your research.
I did. I called, uh, the contact we had, um, down, I believe in St. Mary's or area, and told the city manager there, they utilized one firm, but they did not, he, he admitted, Jamie, they did not go through the competitive process on that, but they did use the services for certain projects. But then I located a sample RFP from actually Peachtree Corner of Georgia who recently went through it. And, uh, so in that effort, in case y'all decide to go forward with this, I've got a rough draft of an RFP that was used by them. We certainly have already made the name changes and, and all we gotta do is find to even the, uh, the, uh, you know, what we want to include in the schedule of services, and we've got a pretty good one in there. So it is done, and, and I do have that, and well, then it's fair, part of us, and we can have a ready to go. So let's go ahead and, for any other questions you need to.
Well, no, I appreciate it. Thank you. And I appreciate what you said about having staff ready for, you know, what, because obviously you're gonna get money, you know, but if you don't have, you know, the challenge would be no handling or, or whatever money came towards you. That's, I appreciate you suggesting that.
Yeah, exactly. And what I'm thinking is that we already have some projects, um, that we know that, you know, we're going through a transportation feasibility study, right? And so if there's any funding that's available for that, any funding available for, uh, infrastructure or anything along those lines. One thing that I did pick up in my conversations with this is that IBM actually has, uh, some funding for, for communities like Statesboro, uh, where they come in and actually teach some technology courses and things that make a far as workforce development is concerned. And so these are just some of the add-ons that these organizations have relationships, not just with those that represent us in Atlanta, uh, but these large Fortune five hundred companies as well. So, you know, at, at the end of the day, whether the money comes from Atlanta or IBM or whatever the Fortune five hundred company is, if it benefits the city of Statesboro, that's what I'm for.
Absolutely.
Mayor, are you using it as other cities who utilize a lobbyist, maybe it's the St. Mary's or the others?
Yeah, St. Mary's, Heinz Field, Peachtree Corns, uh, of course, all of your larger cities that's within the state of Georgia. And, you know, whenever we go to GMA, Statesboro is considered one of the largest cities, you know, if it's anything above twenty-five thousand. But really what I'm looking at is long-term development for the city of Statesboro, is creating those long-term relationships so that we're not just there when we need something. We've already built those, established those relationships so that when the city of Statesboro has, has a need for a particular project, we have those relationships that's gonna allow us to get those, uh, to, to get those opportunities to support those, you know, those, uh, projects.
Mayor, we have, we had, before we put an RFP on, on a agenda, we have a material document that is evaluated, brought forth by the staff for us to evaluate.
Oh, yeah, like the one that, uh, you already, the rough draft? Can we see the rough draft?
Yeah. Yeah, we wanted to have the discussion first because I want to get counsel feedback prior to anything. And so Darren, I, I thank Darren for, he's gonna, you know, gather some information. So I don't see a problem with, um, sending it out to, uh, counsel for us to review, uh, you know, we can kind of discuss exactly what direction we want to go in. And, and.
Here we just, uh, send this, this Sue and Chief Miss first.
If I may. If, if I may, I think a direction we may want to consider going as an alternative, and I, and I think having somebody in Atlanta, um, advocating for us is certainly a good idea. However, I, I think, um, you know, over the past few years, one of the, one of the concerns that the staff has repeatedly brought up, or positions that the staff has repeatedly brought up that we should, you know, bring on board, uh, is a grant administrator, somebody who goes out, is a professional grant writer, seeks grants, writes these grants. And, I mean, the lobbyist is great, but the lobbyist is gonna do no actual work for us. I mean, we're just talking about somebody that's gonna go up and talk to people and shake hands. It'd be nice if we're taking that money and putting it towards an actual additional staff member who could help with, exactly what you're talking about, going out and finding additional CDB grants, transportation, all these kinds of things, but it would be somebody who would be in-house and working for us full-time. You pay a lobbyist thirty-six thousand dollars, that's, they're, you're a small fish in their, in their, in their client base, you know, so, I mean, unless we're gonna put a significant investment into a lobbying firm, my personal, and just, just with feedback from staff over the years, my personal feeling is a credit grant administrator would do the same thing, yet we would have somebody in-house who could become, uh, an expert at Statesboro and the, and the grant functions that we already got.
Do some of these firms not offer that service?
I don't know, simply as.
A grant writing service? That's, I, I don't think that you're gonna find that at your typical lobbying firm.
I didn't know they expand some services.
Yeah, actually lobbying, lobbying organizations are typical, pretty comprehensive. And one thing that's unique, well, not necessarily unique, but lobbying agencies pretty much can manipulate to whatever it is that, 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 uh, that the entity particularly needs. So, so with that being said, yeah, I'm, I'm an advocate for a grant writer, I've been saying that for a long time, but there's a significant difference between a grant writer and a lobbyist organization. A grant writer is gonna go out and get funding that's, that's already there, a lobbyist organization is gonna go out and get funding that's not necessarily there but can be allocated to that, that particular lobbying. So that's the difference between a grant writer and a lobbying organization. I personally, I would like for us to have a buffer now, um, because I think there's a need for buffer now, especially with, you know, again, in this day and age, we're gonna be competitive, competitive. We gotta find, we gotta find a means to get additional resources into our, into our coffers so that we can serve the people.
So here's the, that's, that's the tip of the iceberg. You guys are talking about the tip. So let's say we're successful and we get two or three grants. Cindy's staff right now can't handle any more grants, because in the end, when that stuff comes to us, the staff has to make sure that those projects get done. And so, so if we hired those two people, plan on hiring number three or four to be able to oversee the project, do the financial part. And so I just want you to know that if you're just not hiring one or two, you're gonna be hiring three or four or more people to make sure that, that, that when the audits come, we're not getting caught by not doing things right, because we're the ones that when those come, they're to us.
Yeah.
They're the, to the city. And so we're gonna be responsible for that. So I just want to make sure that y'all understand.
And just as a reference, ALGA is being paid eleven percent to manage that grant? Six? Six percent of what? I mean, how, how much is a grant? Seven fifty? So she's, they're getting about forty-five thousand dollars just to manage that one grant. Now that's to do all the accounting, that's to do, and that's still having to work with Cindy. So, I mean, that one firm, and they're specialists, that's what they do. And that's what they, that's what they charge. What I'm, what I'm getting at is, you're, you're gonna, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, is a, is a, is a small amount for, my, my take is we'll get a bigger bang for the buck with a, with a grant writer first and then a lobbyist coming the other way around, because we'll be somebody in-house. Because, again, like I said, every grant, every grant administration, counsel, you know, chief.
Go ahead. Randy, when you suggest additional people to Cindy's staff, are you suggesting people that are budgeted that we don't have or additional new positions?
There probably be new positions. And, and one thing that we have to understand, that the additional piece to a lobbyist organization is just not funding that you're gonna go after, but also public policy is with us. It allows us to have that professional public policy, uh, uh, spirit here on, on, in, in the state calendar. One discussion that we had at GMA is discussion of the most tax. And, what tax? The most tax, municipal, municipal, so, so one of the things that they were saying is like, yeah, we, it'd be great, but the biggest advocate against the most tax is actually, uh, the counties, uh, the organization that represents the counties. And so those are some of the things that we need to be at the precipice of, because if there was a community that could benefit from the most tax, it's the city of Statesboro, considering that we do not have the loss tax that's turned over to, uh, over to our county. And so we, we, what I, what I'm asking for is for us to have the opportunity to kind of take a look at the, the bigger picture. And that bigger, bigger picture is that we gotta be able to have influence on public policy while we go after, after funds to help security needs that our people get where for in our community. And then on top of that, you know, uh, we've got to have that, uh, ability to create long-term relationships so that it's just not benefiting today, but, you know, down the line. So tho- those are the kind of things that we're, that we're talking about when we're talking about having that representation. And, and the key thing is, I want to get that RFP or RFQ out there because we've, we've had, you know, two organizations to engage us in regards to this. I want to get a conversation going amongst other organizations, see what they can bring to the table as well, and if we need the best representation for the city of Statesboro. You know, besides, you know, RFQ or RFP, that doesn't, that doesn't tie our hands to anything, you know, it just says, okay, let's have a conversation, see what happens, and then really make a decision that's in the best interest of the city as we move forward.
And even if we're not satisfied with?
Yeah, we're not satisfied in it, you know, we wash our hands of it.
It's possible we could get through the salary and stuff before we make a decision on this. Because, I mean, we, I know Cindy, you had to delay those, was it the, was it the company that had to delay?
We were still back and forth with them trying to finalize the numbers.
So is it going to be next week?
Um, probably mid-March, maybe the, maybe the week after.
Yeah, so, so I'll have, um, allow Darren to go ahead and put together the RFP information, send that to you guys, um, for our review and for us to, you to put it on the table for consideration, uh, for, Darren, what, what meeting would you need that on?
I've, I've got it, John.
Okay, so, so, so the next, so the first meeting in the month of March, um, for us to be able to, at least be able to consider. Darren, you, you say you already had it, so you can email it out.
Yes, in person, or am I concerned, as soon as I have it?
Okay.
Is that enough time for you guys to review? I think you want to wait till the second meeting, there would be much easier for me to first, to, to say.
Okay. So let's do it. Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion for it, uh, but I'd also like to add something.
Go ahead.
Darren, uh, as long as I've been here, we have, or at least I've always advocated, we've always advocated, anyone who can write a grant, go out there and write it, give as much money as we possibly can, I think Jason's written a bunch of them, we've written a few, I know there's, uh, PD, the fire department, public works. So any way you could, um, uh, go back and see who's been writing the grants for, because I know we've got some excellent ones, excellent ones on, on staff, and, and I'm not saying that we, we couldn't use one to do it full-time, but, uh, I just, I just like to see, um, what the city has, has written and what we've gotten and what we've lost or what we've stayed on, um, uh, uh, was that, would that be hard for you?
I can look into that.
Okay, anybody in the city, I mean, uh, you know, if it was, um, if it was PD or PD was, could you do that for me?
And I think one thing that we did, um, that we need to keep in mind, and Randy, correct me if I'm wrong, um, is that when you, when you write grants, you can actually build out a cost of administration for it, so that means the person that, that's the person in the county, so an accounting position can be paid for out of grants, you can, uh, whatever, the maintenance, yeah, that's, yeah, sometimes, yeah. Yeah, so, so if that grants, if those grants allow us to be able to do that, then that's what we, you know, that's what we would like to do.
Back in the old days, that was always, you could always take ten, fifteen percent for administration. A lot of grants now, the feds and the state have changed it to where they expect us to carry that cost. But there might be some out there where they still will allow for some, and I just don't know if those are most of them anymore, they just let them just, that, you know, put it in there and, or be in the world and say you can and you can't.
Well, it's not supposed to be administration fee, it's, uh, paying somebody to actually sit down and write your grant to begin with, it's, I mean, it's, once you've got the grant, that's the easy part.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem.
It's the right, they're writing the grants, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I know in town, I'm saying that the city has written a few, but most of them have been limited to small grants, that the police or fire department. CEBG, for example, all three of those were written by outside folks. Who did it on, on, on a promise that, uh, not really no promise, but, uh, they would write it and then if they got it, then that's how they would get paid, so they needed grants to work up on.
And then, and then some of the grants we get, we just get as a grant and we don't have to compete. There are other grants where you gotta compete, which means then we're not assured of getting money. For some of that, some of the police grants, one of the, the JAG grants?
The JAG.
Yeah, those just, those just come and we get, we gotta share another, you gotta compete and it depends what they can see looking for that particular year. I mean, so, so there, it just varies.
Let me ask this question, is there not a firm that you can hire that they specifically write grants?
I'm sure they're probably out there somewhere.
So I, I think that's something that we need to look at as, as a cost, as a cost effect of money, because now we're not, you know, quick inside of our benefits and all that other kind of stuff.
I mean, way more cost effective to hire somebody in terms than it is to hire someone.
We don't know yet, let's find out for us. Let's find out.
I, I do have some experience with it, I can tell you, it's often it's gonna be more expensive than hiring a full country writer. We can be here working with staff and things like that.
So you think, you think a consultant would be more than sixty or seventy thousand dollars a year?
Uh, well, I think you're gonna hire a consultant to write specific grants, you're not gonna hire them just to be a grant writer for the city. And so, yeah, I, I do believe that. If you had somebody writing grants, you have two thousand hours a year in salary, or salary person work, you pay a consultant who worked two thousand hours a year on the city grants, yeah, you're gonna pay him more than six thousand.
I'll just mention something, like, Midwest, um, if we go for federal grants, there's also certain requirements with the federal grant, if we get over a certain amount of money, we have to have a single audit done, um, in a certain amount of year, but with a lot of the brokers, and that's one reason we deal with ALGA, is they're able to check the timesheets, make sure that the contractors are following the rules as well, the vacant data acts.
Vacant data.
David's.
Sure, it was very. You got it right. Thank you so much. So, um, so with your meeting, is there a second? All right, all those in favor?
Mr. Gray, I have one second, I have a point of discussion, please. I tend to side with Councilman William about the timing of this. It's excellent points, all, and a lot of discussion.
Being beneficial.
But we have a lot of faults in there, and the most important one is the face study coming back. Plus, we're trying to staff up to our vacancies. Heavy duty financial impact with Blue Creek and the other issues that we're dealing with. I want to do this, I'm for this, and we can't afford it. I don't think, I don't think we can make that determination in the next few weeks. I think we've got to wait on the face study, we got the transit study coming back, if that comes back, we may be faced with some opportunity and challenges there, so.
Yeah, we're not committing to anything right now.
We're not committing?
Yeah, we're not committing, we're not saying that we're gonna go out and pay, we're, we're not.
What is, what is this motion?
Yeah, what we're committing for is allowing Darren to move forward to, uh, put a bit of the RFP or the RFQ, um, and then present that back to city council, and then once city council gets the information, then for us to be able to review the information and, and have further discussion based on that. We're not committing financially to anything right now.
Thank you.
But we're gonna, we're gonna have a list of what we're looking for in our.
Yeah, that's, that's what Darren was putting.
It's just complete luggage and scope of work and.
Well, that's not what I meant, I mean, if we're, we're gonna hire a lobbying firm, we're gonna have to specify what they're going after, you can't just take a lobbying up and add it to the city of Statesboro, for thirty grand, you know, that's not gonna, we're gonna have a very limited scope of what they're gonna, what do we want them to go do?
Yeah, exactly, and that's why we say, that's why we say a lot of staff to determine the things that we want, want that firm to go out. Uh, I think staff is in the best position to do that situation. Okay. The motion? Okay, John?
I forget myself now, I, I was, uh, making a motion to at least see the RF, uh, the, um, rough draft RFQ that you have and, um, and the information that I asked for. But it can sound like both right now, but.
You know, bring it back at the second meeting in March.
How about, um, send us the, the rough draft, we'll look at it, and if anybody has any changes they want to make, send it back to this, uh, Susan, you'll send it back to him and, and then he can put it on the second meeting in March.
Second meeting in March.
My only concern again with the second meeting in March is that it's a little fast and before we've done the salary survey and before we've done the budget for next year, we don't know exactly how much money we're gonna have. We don't even know how much money the salary impact is gonna have. I mean, it could be up close to, well, it could be up to close to a million dollar impact on our budget with that much adjustment. I think we really owe it to the staff to go through that first. And, and there's nothing wrong, I mean, I don't mind considering the lobbyists at some point, I just think, right at this, like was there, right at this specific moment, we've got a lot of things that we got, we got the city management, we got this, before we go and start looking at hiring somebody else and putting a price tag on that, we gotta find out what we're spending on the salary right now. We've got to deal with the staff we've got, and we may need that thirty or forty thousand dollars to keep some people, you know. I know we've got some.
We're not, we're not committing any dollars, thirty, forty thousand, we're not committing anything. The only thing we're doing is we're committing to the process, that's it.
We're evaluating.
Yeah, we're evaluating, that's it. We don't know how much it's gonna cost, we don't know what we want to commit to. We may look at it and say, you know what, this is a list of things that we may not want to do. You know, the only thing I'm saying is that we need, you know, allow us the opportunity to take a look at it, let's review it, and if it's in the best interest of the city, that's too bad. But I'm gonna tell you, I am not a believer of, of, um, look, I got three jobs, three jobs, five kids, life, working community, you, people make time to do what they want to do. So, I, you know, I don't believe we definitely not do because we too busy to do something else, I don't, I'm not a firm believer in that. With that being said, is there a second?
May I have the motion? I'm sorry, John, but I just want to be clear, what you asked, again, I, I appreciate Susan asking, John, do we, we say what you've asked for?
For, uh, for us to be given the rough draft with RFQ for the consultant firm, send to Ms. Sue, send out to us, so that we can look at it and see if we would like to make any changes, alter, we'll get, and.
Or consider.
Or consider, or, or consider just like it is, and send it back to Ms. Sue, um, and she'll send it back to Darren, um, who will, uh, do it together, like, uh.
Do we need a list of goals before we do RFP?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're doing.
I'm trying to say you can't do RFP until we know what our priorities are.
Councilman William, that's, this is the opportunity, he, he keep telling you that this is your opportunity to, if you want to add something, you add it, if you want to take something out, you take it out. That's what we're doing right now.
How about, how about we have, how about we have some open discussion at the next meeting?
Yeah.
About RFP.
Yeah, exactly, we can do that as well.
Do you have time to do what we're asking you?
No, it's already done for the most already, yeah.
Like Mr. Williams figuring out, there might be a goals and objectives section in there, you know, might want to leave, certainly.
Boy, I thought we were getting staff recommendations, um.
Staff recommendations are already in the.
This is, this is from the sample, this is from the sample. I would like to see staff, you know, staff kind of take a look at it and say, hey, look, these are some things that we want to go out.
So, may I have your help, John? You're, what you're saying is for staff, if and when we were to put out an RFQ, which would be priorities with, within what has already been done by other cities, by our staff, in other words, our staff takes and evaluates what's been done by Peachtree, just as the example we have, these are the things that if we did go forth with an RFP, RFQ, the staff would say would be top priorities, and then we evaluate whether or not, is that what you, is that what you're saying, Councilman?
Yes, um, I'm, I haven't asked for, uh, staff recommendations first, and I would like to see what staff thinks they need before.
Yeah, that's exactly my point. If you can't do an RFQ if we don't have staff recommendations, if the staff recommendations... You can't do an RFQ if we don't have staff recommendations, if the staff recommendations need to be in the RFQ.
I apologize, it's years, years, I miss. All right, so do you want to add that in there?
I'd like to add that.
Okay. All right, so let me, now, I want to repeat this clearly. Your, your motion is going to be to move forward with the RF, to RFQ, RFQ, um, with staff recommendations to be added to it, for, and then for council to be able to have that input as well, with the amendment to make to identify, uh, what grants have been written, um, by what departments, um, and what, was it to be, uh, their impact as well?
Uh, yes, we can get on that. Um, uh, and I'd like to discuss this, uh, um, I'd like to have agenda item, um, at the next meeting.
Okay.
How's that?
That's how I should.
I thought, I thought Jeff had asked it before we get to the second meeting.
Uh, then, well, well, uh, what I meant was to discuss, not to vote on.
Yeah.
Second meeting tomorrow.
Second meeting tomorrow.
Oh, okay, to discuss.
They give staff.
Yeah, that would be better, 'cause next week we're gonna spend.
That's right, and then we get salaries for the weekend for that.
So it might take a few weeks to get staff's recommendations and get that rough draft to you with Darren, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I'm in no rush at all.
Yeah, exactly, there's no, there's no rush.
Where we put that in your baskets, eh, Randy? Congratulations.
They're all there, so it's, so it's funny. Now, staff will, yeah, we can, we'll, we'll come up with a list and, and the example we have, I think we can just put it in the scope and we can show you right there highlighted and then y'all can add or take away or do whatever.
All right, is there a second? All right, all of them say?
Aye.
So we got two hours, three hours?
Uh, okay. Now, three, all right.
All of the polls?
Yeah.
We got two.
We got four, John, John would guess it.
Yeah.
We got John, he got four, Sam. Two, three, four, okay.
All right, so now down to the general item six, is the consideration of a motion.
Cindy has, Cindy has a comment.
So we are in budget times, so we can, at the next council meeting, I'd like to set a date, have y'all set a date for the budget retreat. In current, and here are a few options, if you have some others, if you think about it last night. Okay. Um, it would be Friday, April the 5th, Tuesday, April the 9th, or Friday, April the 19th. Those are three options that I've come up with.
Repeat those.
April the Friday, April the 5th, Tuesday, April the 9th, or Friday, April the 19th. Those are some options, if y'all have any others.
I know you want to do it earlier than later.
Unless you know about the second?
No, we're gonna have it on the agenda for the, at the next council meeting. So that way we have time to think about it and get your calendars.
That's it.
Um, and, uh, we get about, even talked about the pay study for at least till after the middle of March.
Uh, we'll probably try to have those numbers, get back with the company and have all those numbers for April, about in March, we'll be scheduled on the meeting. We won't have minister on Thursday, sorry for, uh, that we.
That's okay, I was getting emails from you and from ladies, uh, thing, and so I, building up and then last night, so I'll get.
I realize that that just wasn't, not happening possible.
I'm baffled, I'm just making sure that I, that there's nothing that I could be missing, but.
No.
Cindy. Friday, April 19th is good Friday.
That would be a bad word.
We'll make a decision in the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Cindy. All right, moving on to the general item six, which is consideration of a motion to withdraw.
All right, all of them say?
Aye.
Any other, don't, don't forget the small meeting we had this morning and new type of.
Got it.
Small meeting that we have today, scheduled, if you've agreed to.
Yeah, I got one.